Yes, sir. Yes.
It's like last year, we had a huge crowd for a federal internet requirement. I don't understand, but okay. All right, the Children's Internet Protection Act requires that K-12 schools and libraries in the United States use internet filters and implement other measures to protect children from harmful online content as a condition for the receipt of certain federal funding. Edwards Republic Schools require an annual recon for a market compliance. We currently employ a checkpoint, content filter, and firewall, and locally installed Loxy software to provide this compliance. All students and staff sign a network and internet acceptable use agreement each year, and every network computer presents the acceptable use agreement prior to voting. Edwards Republic Schools has been compliant since 2001 and will continue to update our equipment and policies. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Listen, just not talking. So we need to approve the first set of minutes from July 11th. Any question, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Moving on to the set of minutes from our special board meeting on August 3rd. Any questions, discussion of those? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Moving on to the final set of special meetings, our meeting on Monday, August 13th. Any questions, discussion of that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. How we get opposed that? August 3rd. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Move those terms back into share. This is part of the meeting. All in favor, any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Moving on to items, agenda, items of business, eight D and voices. Is there support for that motion? Any questions, discussion of the check register? Hearing none, all in favor, pay the bill, say aye. Aye, opposed. Moving on to the 2022 levies, large share, on July 17th.
So in front of you, you have the L-4029, which is a form that we do every year to set the levies for the property taxes. The 18 mils is what the district goes, sets every year, and that's the max that any district can set for the general fund property tax mils. The next two are the debt levies, which are our old debts, of course, bond funds. And this year, the debt funds are actually based on the property values and how much we owe on the debts. We can only keep so much in those bank accounts, and we try to keep them at zero or as close to it as possible because we don't want to keep any taxpayer money we don't have to. Actually, last year, we levied 3.4 total, and this year, we're going to ask, I'm asking you to approve the L-4029 for a 2.85 debt levy. No, no.
So we need a motion to approve the general operating, the 18 mils, on non-homestead property district. General operating purposes, to use the general operating purposes, and 2.85 mils for our debt between our bond operations. All in favor. Support. Any questions, discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Moving on to the second requirement, internet safety, internet areas, right that should be safe anymore? Did you want to say anything, Chuck?
Hi, you know, something we have here, requiring them, I'll offhand that.
So we'd like to make a motion to move the, to approve that. Any questions, discussion of that? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed.
Okay, it's not up on the other side of here. I'm here to recommend the hiring of Ms. Catherine Smith as our multi-age teacher. Ms. Smith comes to us from Cutlerland Elementary in Lansing, Michigan, where she taught second grade. She holds a Bachelor's of Arts degree in elementary education from Michigan State University, and by hiring her, we are bringing her back home because she is a 2017 graduate of Edwardsburg High.
And we're going to hire you to get all together in a group, which is like a protective system for us. Now we're going to dip the craft in.
Good evening, it's my pleasure to recommend the hiring of Franny Semrenak. Franny, can you stand up? She's back in the corner. Ms. Semrenak obtained a Bachelor of Science degree from Western Michigan University and a Master's of School Administration from Bethel College. Ms. Semrenak most recently taught for South Bend Community Schools in a second grade classroom. In addition to South Bend Community Schools, Franny has taught in Arizona for three years, and started her teaching career in Isles Community School. She'll be teaching third grade in the traditional program for Eagle Lake. And as a little sidebar, she is a former student of both Mr. and Mrs. Noel. She's at Isles, she worked in Isles. Franny's very happy to join the EBS family. She's been in, studying in her family, in our family, her classroom. Whenever I see her, she has a huge smile on her face, and we're very happy to welcome her as one of our newest eddies. Recommend the hiring of Franny. Thank you.
Good evening, I have the privilege of recommending three teachers this evening. The first one is Ms. Vicki Anders. She'll be recommended for our gender looping position. Ms. Anders comes to us with more than 16 years of teaching experience from Niles Community Schools, and most recently was employed through Edge of Staff and has held several long-term subpositions and short-term subpositions for us here in the district. She holds a Master of Arts degree in reading from Ferris State University, a teacher certification in elementary education from Michigan State University, a Bachelor of Science degree in fisheries and wildlife management from Michigan State University, and an Associate of Science degree in general studies from Southwestern Michigan University or College. Next is Joy Koontz here. She was en route from the volleyball game. She is also a freshman volleyball coach. Doesn't look like she made it yet. I recommend her for our multi-age teacher position. Ms. Koontz comes to us with over seven years of experience from Eastside Connection School in Niles, Michigan. She holds a Bachelor of Science degree in education from Western Michigan University. And third, I have Ms. Natalie McCullough. I'm recommending her as our gender looping teacher. Ms. McCullough comes with over 10 years of teaching experience and was most recently employed by Wilson Elementary School in South Bend, Indiana. She holds a Bachelor of Science degree in early and middle childhood generalists with mild interventions from Manchester College.
Good evening, it's my privilege tonight to introduce to you and recommend for hiring Mrs. Lindsay Sindalar. Lindsay is also a former Edwardsburg graduate. She left us and went to the University of Michigan where she received her degree in history and psychology. From there, she went to the University of Eastern Michigan University where she received her Masters in social studies. During that time, she's taught 10 years at the Plymouth Canton District. In the last two years, she's been at the Elkhart District, just across the state line, and we're extremely excited to bring a former eddy back to teach our world history and other social studies components at the high school.
So now we get a motion to hire, yeah, as a multi-age teacher in primary. Frances Semrenak, in a, as a third grade teacher at Eagle Lake. Vicki Anders, I say Anders. But, and as a gender looping teacher at the intermediate. Joy Coontz is a multi-age teacher at the intermediate. Anna McCullough, a gender looping teacher at the intermediate. And Lindsay Nadez, as the social science teacher. Any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. So do I smell of the attitude? Too many of them will be colors to be, hopefully, did it. Would you ask the dress code policy to be aligned? Would you like to present your concern about the board?
Is this okay for a moment? Hi. My name is Leanne O'Leary, and my daughter Caitlin is a sophomore at the high school. Throughout Caitlin's freshman year, it became apparent that the dress code and the way it's enforced has some flaws. Namely, the policy is a bad idea and unfairly implemented. Dr. David Brunsma, a professor of sociology at Virginia Tech and one of the decades-long researchers on dress codes and uniforms in schools, argues that the use of dress code and uniform policy in public schools have had no effect on students' behavior, grades, drug use, or violence, and there is no empirical evidence to support that dress codes contribute to the intended outcome of a safe learning environment. Despite the evidence, many schools remain ignorant of this information, and assuming that neuroscience and mainstream psychology are true, schools are hurting students by implementing such restrictive dress codes. Over the course of the last academic year, my awareness and frustration with this policy became that of not only a parent, but also as a concerned professional. I am a clinical assistant professor in the School of Nursing at a local university with 13 years of experience in education at the baccalaureate and graduate program levels. I also practice as an internationally certified forensic nurse with a specialization in the neuroscience of trauma and trauma-informed care. So basically, if someone presents to the ER who's been assaulted physically, sexually, intimate partner violence, human trafficking, elder abuse, child abuse, I'm called in as an expert to provide specialized trauma-informed care, process forensic evidence for the state. I collaborate with law enforcement, provide consultation to the prosecutor's office for civil and criminal proceedings, and I provide community education on outreach and outreach on topics such as sexual harassment, sexual assault, and sexual discrimination. I am here today, first and foremost, to offer our students an organized public platform to finally feel heard. Next, to demonstrate that the policy has been a source of frustration amongst parents as well as one of many sources of contention between the community and the school's administration. And finally, to identify the evidence-based problems of the policy and discuss steps we can take toward resolution. On May 31st of 2022, after almost an hour of attempting to find something to wear that met the dress code requirements, bouts of sobbing tears and profound exclamations of disgust about her body, after an academic year full of scrutiny has left her feeling ashamed of what she is, my daughter finally settled for this skirt. And a men's t-shirt on a 90-degree day with high humidity in a building with no air conditioning. Later that morning, I received a phone call that Caitlin had been dress coded. While walking into the school to pick her up that morning, I passed four boys interacting with school employees, all in blatant violation of the dress code policy. They were not dress coded. As I am in the office picking up my daughter for a dress code violation, a different boy walked in, again, none of the three employees with which he interacted dress coded him. I then found out that Caitlin was standing next to, yet again, three boys, and yet again, all in blatant violation of the dress code. Yet, they were not dress coded that morning. Then, I learned that the boys she was standing next to were in athletic shorts that were too snug and too short to meet dress code requirements, and that my daughter was dress coded, not even for the length of the skirt, but for the wisps of fabric on the bottom of it. If any of these were an isolated incident, I would have dismissed it as a fluke. However, the compilation of what I have, of what I witnessed that day, the patterns that were emerging in the data that the girls began collecting in November of 2021, my copious amount of discussion with students and parents, both online and in person, and the data pulled from Power School reeks of sexual discrimination, rather than any of this being insignificant, isolated incidents. The policy is discriminatory and oppressive to our students for several reasons. For the sake For the sake of time this evening, I will be highlighting some key points on only a few of those reasons. First of all, it's based in hypocrisy. Second of all, it's inequitably written, with restrictions more heavily placed on what is traditionally considered female adolescent clothing options over what is traditionally considered male adolescent clothing options. Just removing pronouns doesn't change the intent of the way the policy is written. Inequitable enforcement. Two things contribute to this. First, the disproportionate restrictions on female attire written into the policy and implicit bias of those tasked with enforcing it. The data pulled from Power School shows a hundred and fifty-four females to thirty-one males dress coded in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Looking closer at the numbers shows that the high school girls are dress coded to boys at three to one rates. And I would argue that this is probably compressed due to inconsistent tracking policies by admin, or practices by administration. And in the middle school, girls are dress coded at a seven to one rate. This demonstrates gross discrimination in enforcement, leading girls to arbitrarily be removed and denied access in educational activities at a far higher rate than boys. It objectifies body parts and allows for the dehumanization of people, typically female people, making it easier for sexual abusers to rationalize their violation of another human's most intimate part of their being, which allows for the perpetuation of abuse and rape culture, both in the message it conveys to our girls' lack of autonomy, their needs are inferior and should defer, that they have decreased human worth, and forces them the responsibility of another person's behavior. Some of the messages it conveys to our boys: entitlement and need superiority. Their needs take precedence over females' hierarchical relationship dynamics and that they are flat ape-like heathens only able to focus on sex, therefore unaccountable for their actions. The policy is short-sighted and rapping in demonstrating an understanding of adolescent brain development and the neuroscience of learning and trauma. It is part of the problem that conditions boys into mindsets of "feelings aren't for girls, only sissies cry", and "I am a boy who cannot control my primal urges, so girls, you better cover up because what you put on your body has more control over me and my thoughts and my actions than I do." This messaging is just as damaging for the health and well-being of our boys as it is for our girls. One of the longitudinal ways we see these messages play out is in future relationship dynamics. We are seeing it currently in the dating patterns of males twenty-five to forty-five years old. Psychology Today recently released an article about the rise of lonely men. Greg Makos, a family and couple psychologist, writes, "Younger and middle-aged men are the loneliest they've been in generations, and it's probably going to get worse. This is not my typical rosy view of relationships, but a reality nonetheless. Over the last thirty years, men have become a larger portion of that growing group of long-term single people. And while you don't actually need to be in a relationship to be happy, men typically are happier and healthier when partnered. For men, this means a relationship skills gap that, if not addressed, will likely lead to fewer dating opportunities, less patience for poor communication skills, and longer periods of being single. The problem for men is that emotional connection is the lifeblood of healthy, long-term love," end quote. Emotional connection, a basic human need, requires all the skills that we are still not consistently teaching to our boys and not consistently holding them accountable for their development of interpersonal skills, their own thoughts, and their own actions. And we undermine progress with bad policy. The policy is antiquated and disproportionately more difficult to find current female adolescent-oriented articles of clothing which meet the requirements of the dress code than it is to find current male-oriented adolescent articles of clothing. The policy increases stress in familial relationships, increasing the risk for child abuse, especially in homes of children whom are already being abused. It increases this relationship strain over clothing, something that the evidence supports adolescents need as much autonomy over as possible as part of healthy identity development. And I remind you, this is with no data to support policy as having any positive impact on the intended outcome for having the dress code policy. The policy increases educational relation, sorry, it increases stress in educational relationships, creating an adversarial relationship between the student and the educator forced to police them, thus decreasing the educator's ability to create a relationship and environment that is conducive to learning. The fear circuitry of the brain is always on, monitoring, like a smoke detector, looking for a threat, acute threat, the threat of being scrutinized, shamed, and on display. Not just the dress code itself increases that fear circuitry activity, causing an immediate increase of corticotropin release hormones which impairs the brain's process for storing and sorting and storing memories. Impose the threat chronically, and it progresses to a decrease of brain-derived neurotropic factors which provide the brain the tools necessary for synapses to collect information, process information, and match it to an appropriate schema for long-term memory development. The policy contributes to an increased risk for all attending students to become involved in the criminal justice system by the time they reach adulthood. In July of twenty-one, Education Next published an article titled "Proving the School-to-Prison Pipeline." Researchers have been looking at a correlation between students attending stricter middle schools and ending up involved with the criminal justice system by young adulthood. The authors write, "We find that students who attend a stricter school are more likely to be arrested and incarcerated between the ages of sixteen and twenty-one. Students assigned to school that is one standard deviation more strict are seventeen percent more likely to be arrested and twenty percent more likely to go to jail. In looking at what types of crimes are involved, we find that school strictness increases later involvement in crimes related to illegal drugs, fraud, arson, and burglary," end quote. It is also important to note that this research shows causal effect, not correlated, meaning action A, the strictness and suspension in the middle schools, cause outcome B, the increased risk for involvement in the criminal justice system by the ages of sixteen to twenty-one. Not that there is a correlational pattern between two factors, causal. And if you are thinking, "Well, my kid follows the rules and doesn't get suspended, so it's fine." It's important to note that this risk increases for all students in attendance at that school, not just the ones being suspended. Now, think back to the dress code numbers in the middle school. Before, kids should even begin to be thinking about sexualizing themselves, let alone as mere sex parts. And now, we also know that the extra restriction here causes them to be on an increased risk of ending up in jail. My last point is the misalignment of policy to strategic goals and the mission and vision statements of the district. I have established that empirical evidence supports that dress code policies do not, in fact, contribute to create a safe environment that encourages tolerance and the curiosity necessary for lifelong learning. There is no evidence supporting the claim of the intended outcome of the policy to actually support the strategic goals or the intended outcome of safety in the school. There has been no collaboration with students and parents as stakeholders regarding this policy. And as a matter of point, on June second, in a meeting with high school administration, when asked to name stakeholders, administration never mentioned students or their families as stakeholders. This policy does not empower our eddies. It oppresses. And the way it is enforced is discriminatory and gravely damaging to all of our students' long-term well-being. It does not maximize their potential to be successful in life. It models to our students that innovation and progress do not actually matter for the equity and betterment of human treatment. The policy is rigid and stuck in community and social norms that no longer exist. I will not stand quietly and allow my daughter to be inculcated into discrimination as a standard of excellence. If our policies and actions do not align to support the strategic goals and ultimately the district mission and vision statements to serve our students, then all we have are empty words, forgotten promises to our children, and a district that knowingly harms them. On July twenty-ninth, in a meeting with you, Jim, Caitlin and I were informed that you have no knowledge of any of the concerns of the community or of the inequitable enforcement, and you dismissed any perspective other than your own. So Jim and members of the board, consider yourself publicly informed and aware. As the people entrusted to write, review, and approve policy with the intended outcome of providing our children with a student-centered quality education, you have the ethical duty to do better. And if the call to do right by our children is not enough to motivate you to support long overdue and necessary change, then consider yourself informed and aware in the context of defending the district against discrimination lawsuit under Title IX federal regulations. In the decision of the Peltier versus Charter Day schools, deeming the school's policy as a violation of civil rights, the Fourth Circuit Court justices stated, "While claims of sex discrimination related to a dress code are not categorically excluded from Title IX scope and based on the plain language and structure of the statute, we conclude that Title IX unambiguously encompasses sex-based dress codes propagated by covered entities. Title IX is a broadly-written general prohibition on discrimination, followed by specific, narrow exceptions to the broad prohibition. In selecting this format, Congress did not list any specific discriminatory practices, and thus, Congress's failure to prohibit explicitly sex-based dress codes does not suggest that such policies are beyond the reach of the statute," end quote. Now, since I have identified a few of the problems with the policy, I would like to offer next steps toward resolution. And therefore, I petition the board to form a task force reportable to the Strategic Rule Area Two Diversity Committee with representation of all stakeholders, including our primary stakeholders, our students, parents, faculty, and administration, to draft a new policy that induces evidence-based rationales to put forth for adoption effective immediately upon approval. I have provided a list of all references via email to Jim so he can distribute the list accordingly. Caitlin and I look forward to the future discourse as the board, administration, and the task force seize this challenge as an opportunity to model open, respectable debate and progress toward change that promotes acceptance, tolerance, and diversity in our schools through an inspiring educational opportunity that truly empowers all eddies for their future. I was handed anonymous letters as I was walking in. This was not originally part of my presentation, but I am going to read these. "The dress code for the girls, I feel, is not fair. The clothes we can wear to school should not be based on if the boys can get distracted by it. It is not our fault that most boys weren't raised right and can't control or can't handle seeing some skin on a girl's body. It's not fair that we have to wear clothes that we don't feel comfortable in. For example, shorts that go past our knees. Most tall girls can't find comfortable shorts that go to their knees and have to wear pants to school because they are afraid to get dress coded. Most girls wear sweatpants every day because jeans are uncomfortable to wear when it's hot out. We should not be getting such a strict dress code just because our skin is distracting to the boys. Teachers and staff should be focused on our grades and learning instead of what we wear." In the handbook, it says, "Your manner of dress influences the learning environment, not only for others, but yourself as well." We disagree. We have a daughter that was a four-year scholar athlete, a member of the National Honor Society, took every AP class available, graduated from Concord in two thousand and fifteen in the top fifteen percent of the class, over four hundred students. She got accepted at IU, Valpo, Ball State, to name a few, and is now a two-time college graduate, working her way to become a lawyer. And her favorite things to wear to school were athletic shorts, tank tops, and flip-flops, pretty much year-round. We have one daughter in the school district currently, and to find shorts is next to impossible, even the Bermuda short don't fit the criteria because of her long legs. How is it fair that our daughter, simply due to her stature, can't wear shorts? Another thing the dress code states is, "Dress or grooming that disrupts the educational environment or is a threat to safety and health is prohibiting." Please break that sentence down for me. What does that even mean? Athletic shorts are not acceptable as well as leggings. Why are they not acceptable? We want to know. Yet, they wear athletic shorts in gym. Why are there different rules for different schools within the district? Okay. "I am a student at Edversburg High School and can't attend tonight due to my commitment to our band practice. We are told often to prepare for adulthood, yet aren't trusted to choose appropriate attire. They preach so much about how we should be mature because we are about to be adults. Then, we should be mature enough to pick our own outfits, right? That's such a small thing. I think that if we aren't mature enough to pick our outfits, then how do they expect us to do that when we are adults on our own? In society, there will always be some that push the envelope. Me personally, I just want to be comfortable at school, and I can't even wear shorts because my legs are too long to meet the standards for even Bermuda shorts. So I wear jeans all year long. There is a major issue in the high school about favoritism as I see so many people that aren't dress coded that clearly should be if they were following the dress code rules. And then, I see the staff pick apart others that would barely, if at all, be breaking the dress code. There is so much talk in school about the cheerleader volleyball tennis track, all the sports attire clearly goes against the dress code, and they do wear them in school at times, and they represent our school, period. So you have a different standard for those that go to the other towns to represent us. How are the double standards okay with you guys? No, I don't see a problem with the athletes' uniforms, but I see a problem that I get disrupted and miss class time over the type of material my pants are made, of the pants that have no holes and almost cover my shoes. It causes a divide in the school regardless of if you guys see it or not. The dress code is confusing and not real clear, and half of us at school don't understand the rhyme or reason. Please update the dress code with us students input." Any questions?
I said, "Thank you, Leanne."
I'm sorry, it's Leanna.
Oh, Leanne.
Yes, thank you.
So anyway, I'm turning this over to our policy committee. This is a recruse. And then we'll be in contact with you.
And when can I expect that?
I will. We first, we have to set up a meeting time. The thing is, this is not going to be a short-term schedule.
I'm well aware of policy change timelines. I'm just asking for a timeline of when I should expect contact from the school.
By before our next meeting, we will have at least a contact. Not the solution necessary.
I'm aware of that.
You'll still be operating under the existing political protection.
Correct. Yep. Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on to the Michigan Association of School Board Certification of Delegates. We have an annual council conference coming up on 20th through the 23rd. It's on up in Hattie, Michigan, Traverse City area. We need, we are entitled to get three holding delegates, then also three. We have to turn this in by what's our date, sure? It's up in Hattie, which is technically Traverse City. It's at the Grand Traverse Hotel. It's where the conference is. Even if you put your name down in your hand, you don't get. Tony, Tony's one. This is Thursday evening. It'll start at 6:00. 6:00, 8:00, generally. We're going once, twice, three times. So we only have going to have two delegates, Tony and Justin. So we need a motion to accept Tony Oldenmeyer and Justin Kimberlett as delegates. Any questions, discussion here and then? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Moving on to the Bari and Cass School Board Association Delegate. This is something that I used to attend every year for the board, but during COVID, this kind of became non-existent. This is a combination of Bari, Grace, and Cass joining together. They have a couple events throughout the school year. They have a minimum of two meetings twice a year. And if I remember right, Jen was on Wednesday evening. I don't remember if it was the first day or the third. But it's nice to get together and know other school board members. Because each district will have one representative and also the, who was Cass? Here just off, we have a representative, yeah, that's you. And you need a Bari and Gisa, so it's up at Bari. So Tammy says she would like to do that. We only need one person for that, isn't it? Each one has one. So we need a motion to appoint Tammy Meemeyer as our representative delegate for the Bari and Cass School Board Association. Do you want to change it to support? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Congratulations, Tammy. Moving on to comments from the board questions.
I have a couple of updates I want to make sure that I give to everybody. Last Friday, we received the CDC update and our county update for COVID procedures that you're going to put in school year. Those recommendations are going to be out shortly. They are representing that things are a little bit produced from the previous year, I would say, the restrictions or the recommendations. We'll get a list of those coming out shortly, but the faculty did. They're not recommending masks at this point. But again, we would encourage if you'd like to wear a mask, if you can wear a mask, please do. If you are found to be COVID positive, it's a five-day at-home recommendation too. And they're recommending six to 10-day with a mask and then not having contact. There's also monkeypox updates. We'll get that. Because I've had a few questions about monkeypox. And then finally, the county is going to send out an equine encephalitis update also. So if you are outside, do attend whatever activity you happen to be in, they strongly recommend wearing mosquito pads. Second item that I want to report to you is that we did have a campus assessment done by our Cass County Critical Incident Management Coordinator. He has nearly finished with the assessment. He's going to just give that to us. And we'll get that within a few days. But he's related to me that he had done a pretty good job with what we have. Remind you that beginning of the year this year, we're going to go through that training again. And as long as we follow our policies with the abilities that we have, we're doing the best we can. So we will give recommendations for updates with the abilities that we have. And you will also volunteer, be part of any on, planning, moving forward. So we have a second expert, actually a third expert to help us with that. We will have some transportation. My third item, we will have some transportation changes this year. And I'm sorry to tell you that, but we have had difficulty getting drivers. And we have fewer drivers than we had last year. So you're going to see things like community stops, maybe some other combined stops. And you may end up having to add A's on buses because of the New York kids on buses. That's something that we will evaluate next week or two as we get more of our enrollment completed. And I want you to know that that's when you need a sore point.
Now what you have to do is you come up at the microphone, state your name, please, and your address. And we have three minutes of limitation. When you see me raise my hand, then I'll give you that.
My name is Jill Geronick, 68272, Christian and Drive in Edwardsburg. I am speaking on behalf of my husband, Jason, who has work obligations, Kara and Nick Gessinger, who also have work obligations, and Bill and Samantha Hall, who have church obligations. To be fair, Kara Gessinger wrote this, and I'm reading it on her behalf. "We are writing on the behalf of our sophomore daughters, Grace and Izzy, our freshman daughters, Sophie and Skylar, and our sons, who are in seventh grade and sixth grade, Ray Geronick and Owen Gessinger. We, as the parents of teenage girls, have hit a breaking point with the strict dress code specifically geared toward the young women at Edwardsburg. While we support appropriate dress for school and other functions, the double standard for the girls were held. Tools compared to their male counterparts has become something, as we, as parents of girls, have said, are fed up with. The limitations put upon our daughters not only make shopping for them extremely difficult, but more importantly, the much bigger picture here is it places the responsibility of teenage boys sexualizing our daughters solely on the females. It's very much a brachial syndrome of our society that when a woman chooses how to express herself through her clothing choices, it's then their fault if a man looks or acts sexually aggressive toward them. In this day and age's complete opposite message, we should be sending our daughters. They are strong. They're powerful. They have voices of their own. They should not be taught that a tank top or skirt of certain length should diminish that. While we agree that some clothing for both males and females isn't school-appropriate, the hypocrisy of short shorts being allowed in gym class or in our athletes is okay, but not to walk to science class, or that boys can wear shorts at inappropriate length for the code, but girls can't be in athletic yoga pants, leggings, or jeans with fashionable tears in them seems like a tremendous double standard. Pretty much almost every middle school and high school female wears nothing but sweatpants every single day of the school year. In my opinion, they look sloppy and way less professional than lightly distressed jeans with small tears. I also want to address the no athletic shorts for boys in middle school and high school. It makes zero sense that 95% of the kids wear sweatpants all year, but not allowed athletic shorts because pantsing happens, and it looks less professional. How about we have consequences for one's individual actions instead of punishing every kid in the school system? I also want it to be noted that tight pants and jeans can be worn if only they have pockets. Not sure of the rationale behind this, but they don't look any more appropriate than nice pair of yoga pants or leggings when they are so tight that they look painted on. But it's okay if they have pockets. There must be some happy medium we can reach to give our kids autonomy over their own bodies. Makes it easier for us as parents to shop. Has any of you been to the mall lately? Finding denim that is not distressed is nearly impossible at all takes the blame off of our daughters. The dress code seems antiquated. Our children are so fed up with the limitations that they are resorting to essentially wearing pajamas every day. Sincerely, the fed-up mothers of a 15-year-old or 15-year-olds who are smart, powerful women, capable of telling a boy to get lost on her own because it's who she's raised to be. Let's give chance to that. Thank you, Kara and Nick Gessinger, and again, the Geronicks and Halls as well."
This is Avery Tapp. We live at 697279 Ham Lane. And she wrote a little speech that she wanted to share.
Hi, my name is Avery. I'm going into fourth grade. I think in middle school and high school, you should be able to wear athletic shorts. There's nothing wrong with wearing athletic shorts. I've seen a lot of boys wear athletic shirts, and it does not bother me. Same with those girls. Now I'm going to talk about leggings. There is nothing wrong with wearing leggings. And it is already hard for people that don't like to wear sweatpants and leggings. Of jeans.
She wanted to share that, so. It seems what a girl looks like is more important than what she thinks or knows. No girl should forfeit her education because of shorts are showing too much leg. Her pants have holes in them. Her shirt isn't long enough to cover her backside. To cover her body is shameful. We were born with this. We were born with behinds. We were born with chest. We were born with legs. God created that for us. I tell my children, we love everybody. We respect everybody because that's who God made. You're telling us, my child, if she gets to middle school, she should cover up what God gave her. That is shameful. There should be some guidelines. I think most parents in here agree. It shouldn't be a free-for-all. There should be some, and having parents and students give a say in that, gives them power. We want our children to have power. Let's teach them now how that is. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Frandl. I used to be a student here. I live in Mishawaka. I don't know why you buy that house. What do we think about my outfit, sir? Do we think it looks okay?
It's hot.
It's fine. This isn't fine according to the dress code. I don't remember if it's four fingers or two fingers or what it is for this little strap here. But why does that matter? Is my shoulder distracting any of you? How about the holes on my knees? Are those a distraction? Any of the guys in here getting a little excited?
Nope, not in the eyes.
Okay. So why is that against the dress code? That doesn't make any sense to me. I remember I was wearing a little dress. It went to my knees, just about where those little holes start, okay? That's within dress code. Because whatever it is, it's like four fingers above your knee. That's appropriate, correct?
Yeah, correct.
I made it all throughout the day. It was hot. There is no AC in that building. I made it to the seventh hour, and my French teacher sent me down to the principal's office. They didn't say anything was wrong with my dress. They said, "It's hot. It's the last hour of the day. Whatever." And when I came back to class, my French teacher, Nancy, said, "Maybe you should keep that for the club." For the club? My little dress for the club? I'm in high school. Why on earth would you say that to me? I made it all throughout the day, and you had to make that tiny little remark? So I know Leanna made a very calm, collected speech for you guys. But I can promise you, every single teenage girl that goes to this school is enraged with this dress code. No girl should be spoken to like that in front of her classmates. No girl should be spoken like that in front of a stranger. Doesn't matter if she's your teacher. That's not your mom. That's not your auntie. That's not your family. If you have children here, and they haven't come to you about the dress code, I'd be surprised. And the fact that the school supposedly didn't know about this annoyance is shocking. And it really makes me think that these little girls aren't getting heard. Thank you.
I didn't prepare a speech. I didn't know I was going to talk here. My name is Ingrid Bushland. I live at 69141 Lee Road in Niles. I am in district. My daughter's a senior here. And I agree with everybody that said things about the dress code. But aside from just the dress code itself being unfair based on gender, I just want to tell you, based on my personal experience, I'm a single mother. My ex-husband's now deceased. I'm a full-time registered nurse. I own my home. I'm paying my mortgage. I live a very modest life. We don't wear high-end clothes. My daughter and I, we shop at the Louvre, shop at Sam's Club. And I want you to just think about this. I'm middle-class, if that. I live paycheck to paycheck. It is very, very difficult to find clothes that meet the dress code standards these days. You can only find, I just took my daughter shopping the other day, leggings and ripped-up jeans. That's all you can find. It's very difficult to find things. And I'm sorry, I can't afford $80 jeans for my daughter to find something that looks like that, especially when the jeans have just a little bit of tear. I can understand certain things, and I do understand that there is, there should be some limitations and some restrictions. But I just want you to think about the part of the school district for those people whose kids get the free breakfasts that don't have steady incomes coming in. It's very difficult for them to find the clothes that meet your guidelines as well. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
My name is Nanyi Schreiber. I live at 66271 Blackberry Road in Edwardsburg, Michigan. This year, I will be in eighth grade at Edwardsburg Middle School. And I would love for the school board administrators to consider a more lenient dress code. It's very hard today to find clothes that are considered appropriate based on school policy with current trends. I believe our school can still be represented very well by our students with some concessions to current policies. My parents chose to move to Edwardsburg for the school system and the education it provides, not because of their restrictive dress code. This is a pair of pants I wore to school previously. And there's a small distress spot right here. And I was sent to the office to put this duct tape on this because... In summary, I would hope that the school board would adopt a more flexible dress code.
Hi, my name is Absinthe Lyle. Good to see you again Noel. I live in at seven one three two six Melvin Road and I'm in district. I am a graduate from here. Um, and when I was in seventh grade, I was maybe not even twelve. I had Mr. Clements, our, well, principal, come up to me. I was in a men's t-shirt and skinny jeans with pockets, I would like to say. So they were within dress code. He came up to me and told me as a twelve-year-old girl, a minor, that right here was too tight for school. Too tight for school. Why was our teacher, our safety, the person you're supposed to go to when you need help, looking at my no-no squares we're taught in elementary school? And how is a tear less distracting than a piece of duct tape over it? How are you able to humiliate these girls? Me, the future generation into submission? How are you going to humiliate them and not allow them to have a voice in what they wear, how they wear it? Yes, you can't show up in stripper clothing. Okay, cool. I just wanted to wear shorts. I wanted my teachers to care about me, not what I was wearing, not whether my chest was being shown too much, whether my shoulders were out. I was hot. I just wanted to learn. I was failing middle school because I didn't want to be there. Why would I want to be somewhere when no one cares other than what I wear? It doesn't make sense. And for the teachers to say they understand and then go on and break the dress code as well? How is that setting a good professional standard when even the professionals are breaking it? I've seen teachers break it numerous times. We even had the legging day. Does anybody remember that? Anybody here remember that? We had a day where we were allowed to break one rule and everyone got to wear leggings. And then they said we couldn't keep it. Why? Because we broke it. But why were leggings taken off of the roster in the first place? No one could tell us. But we came to school, we were wearing leggings, we were wearing shirts just like this, covering our behinds, not distracting. They didn't let us have it. Why? Because we were still too distracted, even though we all followed the rules. We even had guys wearing leggings. Girls were still getting dress coded for not having shirts, shirts long enough. But not a single guy was dress coded that day. So how is that fair? I am out of the school district now. I have graduated. I'm ready to move on with my life. But I am sick and tired, sick and tired of watching my sister tear herself apart because of this dress code. Thank you.
Good evening. Jason Walk, seven one four six six Merle Street, Edward'sburg, in district. Uh, father of three daughters who are here tonight. Um, Leanna brought up two numbers that I think if I were in your seat, I'd be really concerned about. The policy is going to take a while to change and that, that usually is typical in, with something like that. But if you have an enforcement bias of three to one and seven to one, that can be fixed tomorrow because you have administrators and teachers that are implementing the bias. And we expect you to fix that immediately. Because I would ask you what policy in this school is being enforced with a bias with those numbers right now? And if you don't know, I'd start asking more questions. So that's my charge to you and I hope, and I know the community will support me on this, but you can fix that immediately. Because, and if those numbers are wrong, then show that to me, okay? But that's your job right now, is fix the bias immediately. Thank you.
Why don't you sign up, honey? Uh, young lady, why don't you sign up please?
So my name is Zinnzie Fracco. I live on the corner of Palmer and Yen Yen District. I actually, I wasn't saying anything, but um, I went back to school for shopping with my daughter and my sons. My daughter's going into eighth grade. Um, my sons are going into fifth and third. My sons were literally ready to pull their hair out because my daughter's time in the dressing room was three times the amount of time that my sons were in the dressing room. This is the picture of my daughter in these shorts. She said, Mom, I cannot wear these to school. I will be dress coded and I don't want to be dress coded. They are here. She has longer legs. These, I would be dress coded for these. I used to wear these for work, right? It is body shaming to the max. And when I tell you the, the mental anguish that that child feels getting dressed for school in the morning, it is heartbreaking as a child. It is absolutely heartbreaking. This dress code tells our girls that their bodies are not okay to show. It, it makes getting dressed awful, which as women we know it already is. It already is. So finding anything that they can look halfway cool in, and we all know how much that means being in middle school and high school, is nearly impossible. And, and I go back to what you just said about the, the ripped jeans. How on earth is a tear in your knee less distracting than putting duct tape over? Thank you. You might as well put duct tape over their maps. It is disgusting what we are doing to these children. It's absolutely disgusting. And as far as the boys go, we're, we're wanting our boys to, to walk in like they're going to church. Really? In fifth and sixth grade? I have a sensory issue child who has very severe anxiety and O C D. He will not be able to wear athletic shorts or non-athletic shorts. I can tell you that right now. He won't make it to school. He will not make it to school. It needs to be changed. Our girls need to be lifted up instead of beat down. That's right.
Hi, my name is Allison Lee. And as some of you may know, I am an upcoming sophomore at Edward'sburg High School. And honestly, I suck at public speaking. It's not something I'm good at, so I'm sorry in advance if I stutter or anything like that. But I would just like to say I am transferring in from Edward'sburg this past year from a Catholic private school in South Bend. If you would like to be specific, it was called Holy Family. It was very strict. We, it was, I don't even want to go into it. But you're telling me that I was able to get away with this outfit at that school, but I can't get away with that at a public school? Public school is supposed to be free. It's really having to, look, I'm so sorry. Having to have other kids come in because they just want to get an education. Some other kids can't afford certain types of clothes. And my preference, example, for Walmart leggings, they are much cheaper than a pair of Walmart jeans. There is no reason that a girl, that we're teaching this at such a young age, a girl should have to dress accordingly because a guy can't keep anything intact. Thank you.
Paula Hawk, seven one four six six Merle Street, Edward'sburg. I just have a quick example. The beginning of last year, our oldest daughter was in seventh grade. She got dress coded and whoever the office staff was that called me said that it was because her skirt was appropriate length, but when she walked up the ramp, boys could look up at her. That was the example. Like that was it. She was appropriate, but boys could look up at her.
Oh no.
Sorry, I sound like I'm going to cry. I just don't speak. All right, I'm not. Uh, no, it's crazy. I mean, anyway, that's it.
Marcy Wuntz, six eight nine five five Cody Drive, in district. Kind of to go off of that. My straight A student, three sport child who barely speaks up in class, was brought up in front of the entire seventh grade classroom and told to bend over to see if her dad's medium-sized sweatshirt was going to cover her behind. I knew she's four ten and a half. A men's medium sweatshirt clearly covered her behind in her leggings. Now in the handbook, it says leggings are not allowed. However, they're told leggings are allowed if what, four fingers above the knee? Two fingers, three fingers? There's no consistency with this dress code. My ten-year-old can't wear leggings to school. I got the note today in their hand, in their little packet. Why can't my ten-year-old child wear leggings to school? I, there's no rhyme reason. Please tell me, is there a reason that? Children. Because even my twelve-year-old is still a child until the day they graduate this school at eighteen years old. They are children. And they're getting sexualized in this school district and that's pretty scary. But there's absolutely no reason that it is this strict. And for the sake of my kid in this school district? That is humiliating and it shouldn't, that shouldn't be happening. I mean, I'm sure you guys aren't aware that that, these are the types of things happening in your schools. It's, it's, it's not allowed. So these things need to stop.
Hello, my name is Muz McLeish. I'm going into senior year right now. I live in Madawan, which is another school in Michigan. Their entire dress code is be ris-, sorry, be reasonable, we don't care. I see girls every day in shorts up to here. I see ripped jeans. I see leggings. Everything that y'all say will violate dress code. Do you know how many of them distract me? Not a single one. That is all.
My name is Shane Schreiber. Can you hear me? Sorry. Uh, six six zero seven one Blackberry Road. So I want to stand up here tonight to my daughter and my other one who's not here. I'm a parent of two students in the district, eighth grade and fifth grade. I do not consider myself an activist and I'm more than willing to hear someone else's views on things before I weigh in myself. But I've seen this as kind of a trend over the last few years and as my girls are growing up, I see it more. Uh, but in this case, however, I feel motivated to come and advocate for my kids as well as their friends and classmates as many of I see here in the audience tonight. But I remember being a kid and being excited about getting new clothes for school. New shoes, you know, there's a huge sense of confidence when you can put on that new outfit. You know, you walk out the door and you can be ready to conquer once ahead the new school year. I feel like my kids get a rainy day version of this feeling though. Many articles of clothing that they find, um, that are in trend today are, are not aligning with the, the policy here at EPS unfortunately. So my wife, Melissa and I agree that for our family, a dress code really isn't needed in most cases. We feel like we can police what they would wear before they walk out the door. Um, so you know, with that being, you know, but again, a lot of these things that we see being deemed as inappropriate, you know, we would just certainly disagree with. But you know, I encourage you to consider a policy change. Let's change the attention towards some of the bigger priorities that we face. Um, some of those things being air conditioning that we could soon have. So thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Dawn Schumaker. I'm Allison's mom and she gets her not ability to speak from me, so I apologize in advance. Um, as she mentioned, she came from the Catholic school. Um, we are out of district, but I chose this school, so I am a school choice. I picked your guys' school. At the beginning of the year last year, I got the manual, I looked, got the dress code. Again, from Catholic school to here, okay, I can handle this. We went shopping. Like the first week, can't remember exactly, Ally was wearing a sweater that hit the button on her pants and she got dress coded. So I left work, which was forty-five minutes away, came over, brought her a shirt. And at the end of the day, we're sitting in the parking, I'm watching, and I'm watching girls walk right by the teacher and she's wearing crap down. Okay, so now I'm hyper aware of what's going on. Then she and I go shopping and again, we start looking. Teenage trauma. She's in the thing crying. I'm trying to figure out what exactly she's supposed to be wearing. She's like, I can't wear that. I'm going to get dress coded. I can't wear that. I'm going to get dress coded. She mentioned it, that she felt she was being picked out from the dress code, that she was being picked on. That she was seeing other people were the same thing she were and she was the one who felt like she was going to get dress coded. And teachers had made comments to her. They didn't dress code her, but she says the teachers made comments to her. As parent, we're trying to instill this ability to be proud of their body. We should not have any body dysmorphia at this age. This is a critical point of females to which they can have body dysmorphia. Just because somebody says, they're making them think about what they look. Is that really what we want to do for the women in our school? It harms them for the rest of their life. They can have eating disorders, all kinds of psychological things, big as a body dysmorphia. I agree with the dress code. That's why my daughter went to the Catholic school to begin with. But there should be reason and they should be able to express themselves. Thank you.
My name is Tapra Williams. I'm a mother of ten, three boys, seven girls. I went to school myself and I've seen two boys through this school district. I currently have five girls in this school district right now. Okay? And I've got, I'm going to go. I can say that we witnessed in my own house the differences in how the dress codes affect females versus males as well as the differences in the schools. I believe it was last year I had one in each school, literally. Okay? And those sisters would pipe, well, how does she get to wear that? Honey, she's five. They don't care. She can wear leggings. That's not fair. Several, several answers. My question is why is it starting in fifth to sixth grade on up, butts become an issue? I was told in two thousand seventeen, eighteen and twenty twenty, as I still have the paperwork at home, that I need to look, to buy longer shirts for my three oldest girls. These were different kinds. Why? We already buy the longest shirts because their torsos are so long. Almost all my girls are taller than me, my three older ones. My now twelve-year-old. Now has a severe complex. It self-issues with body dysmorphia stemming from her fifth grade incident. She is now in therapy. When asked about this, she says that she's bigger than her other sisters, even though she's younger therefore that's the reason she has to cover her butt. So when my girls ask me why they have to cover their butts all the way when others don't, I didn't have an answer for them. And that's not a good feeling. I should be able to tell them why your guys' policy is the way it is. There has to be reason. It's our responsibility as parents to give our children reasons and answers. My girls dress extremely conservative. They won't even wear a v-neck. They wouldn't be caught dead with this. Are you guys also aware that if, that flannel patterned pants aren't allowed despite the fact they are advertised and sold as our school's spirit wear? But flannel shirts are allowed? I fully intend to finish what I wrote today. I, with all due respect. This is an example of how unclear the rules are. I feel the dress code is far from black and white. It is completely gray. After the band set a school record for getting third in state in November two thousand twenty-one, my daughter wore M C B A state championship pants to school every week starting November eighth and she was proud. Okay, well then now I want to speak for my husband. His name is Eric Williams. On December sixteenth, it was reported that the school will be increasing police presence at the school after the administration. it was reported that the school will be increasing police presence at the school after the administrations, after you guys became aware of the national threat that was circulating. Parents and students were online debating whether they should send, send their kids to school, and students were scared to even go to school. Do any of you guys know what, what the high schooler kids walked into on December 17th when they got to school, when they were already easy and then scared about this threat? Does anybody know? A large group of staff stood outside scrutinizing every student before they walked in that day. I am certain there is security footage of this. Please go ahead and ask them, and find out the total number of students that got dress coded that day, and why the difference was for the rest of the year. It's mind-blowing, and my daughter was one of them, wearing the same gear that she had been wearing since November 8th, and it wasn't an issue. So, parents were called to bring change clothes, which also increased the amount of non-student people on campus on a day that was already stressful and needed overlooked. And then everything returned normal the next week. Right, head row neck. The dress code affects way more than some might think. Please send out a memo on the reasonings and rules of the current dress codes, so us parents can inform our kids at minimal of the questions that they ask us why. Please consider updating the dress code with the input of parent, staff, and students as soon as possible, or get uniforms to alleviate the unnecessary stress. Thank you.
Hello, Sean Schenkel, 66071 North York. I'm putting five kids to school, so I can't compare to the 10. But I'm an alumni myself. This has been an ongoing issue from when we were in school, people teasing each other because I came from a very low-income family. I have one style of jean I can wear, I learn three days a week, and in middle school, I was teased to death, and I remember that to this day, which is a shame. My kids have dealt with this dress code because they know I don't like to talk about it. It's not something I want to deal with. I don't understand it, but I asked my kids to abide by it and do not get me called out of work because you get dress coded. That's not fair to them. I ask that you guys look at this policy. In addition, one thing that hasn't been said, why shorts only until October 1st? And why can't they wear them until May? Put that on the agenda, because there are so many people that can't handle long pants. Shorts are the way to go, even in the winter. We all see it, tell me you don't. You all see it. So, even putting a limitation when we don't have air conditioning on our kids, that they can't wear shorts after a certain time, and you can't wear it until a certain time, is ridiculous as well. So, I'd ask you guys to take those things into consideration. It's not just in the last 15 years, guys. I graduated '89. This was a problem back. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Abby Robbins. I live on Comrad Road. I'm a senior at Edversburg High School this year, and all throughout middle school and high school, we're told they're preparing us for college. I'm also a dual-enrollment student at IUSB, but at IUSB, there isn't a dress code. I saw the college students in my class wearing leggings, wearing athletic shorts. So, it's just quite confusing to me that there's no dress code at college, that that's what we're being told we're getting prepared for. Another thing is, I'm also a cheerleader on the varsity cheer team sideline. I have super-long legs, my cheer uniform, pretty short, but all the students, all the community sees me in my cheer uniform at the football games, but I'm not allowed to wear athletic shorts that are probably longer than my cheer uniform at school. So, I just feel like there's a lot of double standards, and it's quite confusing to me and the other students at the school, and I feel like those double standards deserve to be changed. Thank you.
We can withdraw if Kevin's. I think you put that on here. I, I was doing more. You have to get even to withdraw your, yeah. Withdraw that motion for the moment. Okay. No vacuum motion, vacuum questions. Comments and questions? Comments and questions?
Hi, Kim Hartz, 30970 Rocky Horse Lane, Niles. I am in District. I have been teaching in Edversburg School District for 28 years. I chose to be a teacher because I have passion for working with students and helping them reach their full potential. I'm proud to be an Eddy, and I, and often, I'm willing to make compromises and we're to have the best for our students, staff, and community. Although the proposed teacher contract for the 22-23 school year looks great on paper, in reality, 35% of teachers would be receiving $1,500 fewer dollars in their pocket than when they received in 21-22 school year. We acknowledge that things are tough for everyone, but our purpose to ask for a fair and equitable contract that is good for 100% of our teachers rather than only 65%. To this point, we are not there yet. So, there's one simple question to consider. Would any of you be willing to make a compromise that would cost you $1,500? This is a healthy district. Is the district in a position that they can afford improving teacher salaries in a way that is equitable for all teachers, or are they just unwilling to do so? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kim Stevenson. I've been teaching at the middle school for 28 years, starting my 29th year, and I love what I do. I've also given up a lot in times of my time, which I am generously willing to do for my students and their families in our district. But when 35% of us teachers are consistently, two years in a row, being asked to take a pay cut, and it's us veteran teachers, it makes us feel like we're not valued all that much, and I think that veteran teachers are bringing a lot to this district. So, I would just hope that you would think about that for the next round of our negotiation. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Judy Frank, and I've been a high school teacher since 1990. During these past 32 years in Edversburg, I've taught roughly 4,500 students, including a current school board member, several of my teacher colleagues, and even the current middle school principal. In addition, I was one of Mr. Noel's supervising teachers while he was a student teacher to earn his teaching license. During this time, I've embraced my job, I've loved my students, and I've worked tirelessly to provide them with the best possible science education I could. I have been a dedicated, faithful Eddy, promoting our district and embodying our educational mission, but I can no longer remain silent bystander concerning teacher compensation in Edversburg. I reached the top of the pay scale in 2010. Over the next 11 contracts, my base salary increased by only $5,078, while about $462 each year. All our insurance premiums and deductibles continue to substantially increase each year. As a result, since 2010, I've essentially continued to lose money. EPS constantly proclaims pride, passion, purpose, which leads me to ask, what are Edversburg teachers worth? Are you proud of us? Are you passionate about the work that we do and the education we provide our students? Do you embrace our purpose and our desire to continue to move EPS forward with the best teachers in the area? We have a veteran teaching staff that has devoted their time and talent selflessly for years for our students. What are we worth? This is a healthy district? Is the district in a position that they can't afford improving teacher salaries in a way that is equitable for all teachers, or are they just unwilling to do so? Thank you.
My name is Kevin Bartsch. I live on Lee Road. I've been a teacher in the district for 31 years. I think what I'd like to present with you is kind of try to clear up some of the number issues, because what's out there is that teachers are getting a 3% raise. That is, hasn't been accepted yet, but that was, is what is being offered for those that are received, that are 22 years or less. Any teacher in the district that has more than 22 years, and if you're on the master scale, like I said, my wife and I, what we would lose in terms of compensation from last year and this year would be $3,050. So, what I'd like to give you, because I also know that there are no board members that are directly involved at the table, our superintendent is not at the table either, we have a lawyer who has no idea how the district works, we have our new CFO officer who is there, who's brand new to our district, we also have our assistant superintendent who is new to negotiation in Edversburg. So, of the people that are leading this district, the eight people up front here, not a single one of you sits at the table deciding these issues, and I would be willing to bet several of you have no idea financially what's going on. So, I'm gonna give you a few pieces of paper. I won't have, we could spend 15 minutes, but I at least want these in your hands so you understand where the discrepancies are coming from. And a lot of it comes from terminology. We were given things called off-schedule payments, which are negotiable every year, just like everything else, and they bet on our schedule for four years at $2,000. Those are being removed. So, when they say they're giving us a 3% raise, they removed $2,437 that we had before, then gave us 3%, so it actually equals to more like a 2% loss of my compensation. So, for my wife and I, $3,050 with kids going into college and everything else, my financial advisor over here would tell me, "That's not a good deal, Mr. Bartsch." My accountant would tell me, "That's not a good deal, Mr. Bartsch." So, let me at least show you the numbers, so you guys have something to look at and talk about, and I guess I'd like to see this board more involved, all seven of you, and go, "Hey, we're representing the community, are we representing what they want? Are we happy with our 10-year teachers making less money than they did last year?" And I know, once again, I don't have the time to get through all this, so let me at least give you this. I'd be more than glad to sit down with any of you. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jeff Kozinski. I've been teaching at the high school. I'm going on year 28. I love what I do. I love our district, I love our community. I'm confident that after Coach Bartsch put together this information for you, after you have time to look at it, I'm confident that our school board superintendent, I think, will do the right thing. Thank you.
I'm Michael Marx. I live on Acorn, in District. This will be my 26th year at the high school. I've taught thousands of students and like those who have spoken before me. I'm part of the 35% that's, that's taken the hit, and I ask that, as you call us family, that you treat us like family. Thank you.
I'm a teacher and I didn't plan on speaking. My name is Jennifer Estrada, I'm the Catholic, the finance director. My daughter was concerned as a sixth grader, about the dress code. And as I stand here and listen to some of my very favorite teachers, Ms. Bart, I'm the finance director, thank you for everything you've done. I see, Ms. Frank, Mr. Bartsch, I am sickened that such fabulous faculty that you have, you would do this to.
Good evening. I'm Steve Wright. I'm going on year 17, so I'm not into 35%, but I'm here for them, because I know they would be here for me, and we're all in it together. So, we just ask that you take that into account when you're making these decisions. Thank you.
My name is Charlene Getz. I've been here, it's going to be my 23rd year, I'm pretty sure. I had three kids that came to school here, graduated from here, they're all very successful. I'm very happy with the education they received from my colleagues and all the staff here. I am here and support them, because I know the hard work that they do, because they're in the trenches every day, and these, this school, these people, you have an outstanding staff here, and they work very hard for your, your sons and daughters. I don't know anybody that doesn't go the extra mile when they need to. I don't know anybody. They did it for my kids, and they'll continue to do it for yours. And I think that these folks that have been here longer than myself deserve to feel the value that they put into this community for years. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Brian Shybel. I'm going on year 20, which I realize, that makes me kind of old all of a sudden. But I also have three kids, well, two, one's, one's moved on, but I have three kids that have gone, they're going to the district, and I look at the, the people standing out here, sitting out here, and the number of times you drive by on the weekend and see their cars in the park. That's worth something. That's where it's at.
I have a big question for you guys. How do you ask for pay breaks and yet obviously not pay your teachers' rent? Or how do you buy property but not pay teachers' rent? Yeah. I would say a lot of these teachers I've seen helped me graduate, which says something and keeps you guys with jobs. And you're gonna cut them, because I know you make more than that. So, how are you gonna achieve that?
We, we make six hundred dollars a month. You mean, we, we drop the check? I thought you said. I thought you said this was a dollar. We, we make six hundred dollars a year. Thank you for your time.